I feel like music sounds better with you. Study, study, study session. Alright, so I was looking at today's. I was looking at today's chart today. You gonna look at today's chart, finish out the one minute timeframe, make a video on it. And explain how the one time in a frame work, we're not gonna calculate this one. We're gonna calculate. Just the one we went over, we gonna do a video on it, we going. I'm mad I really took this long, so I promise this week. I at least go for live four times. This week. Did the times of seven and ten. So guarantee I would at least go live four times explaining how we go, how you could just make money off this. The study session is basically. Me figuring out ways. How to simplify it and actually. Make it that you're comfortable trading this way, like it's very profitable, so. I am going through steps, tips, tricks, um, I'll break it down. Um, going through new things, I would do the one minute timeframe this whole week, that's what we're going through, one minute timeframe, we going through the one minute, one minute, one minute. We gonna study every day, one minute, one minute, one minute, this whole week boom, and then we're gonna actually take a challenge. If, if we see the studies are showing this is actually a profitable thing, but I've been studying this for almost. Too long, so I actually wanna actually sit down and study this whole week, and then that's it, we gonna take the challenge, and then. As we take the challenge, we gonna document it, boom, 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 and then we gonna go up to a higher timeframe, just to see if the one minute doesn't work. Um, we will use a, um, we gotta use a, um. Two step, I usually recommend a one step, but. The leverage is so low, and then you're turning on a one minute, so we have to take a two step on the challenge, but. Either so, I like what we see, I'm being truthful and honest, there's no point of lying on, especially on a study session. I see it was YouTube video, no point of lying here because it's a study session, I'm really trying to figure out ways, not just for y'all, just for. My damn self, how to execute at the best way, so we're not gonna lie, we're gonna tell the truth, nothing but the truth, hundred percent the truth. On study sessions. That's all I can say, cause study sessions is meant to be truthful, even if the strategy sucks, it's a study session, I'm not posting it to. Get views, I'm posting this to actually. Figure out how to fuck to break this shit, I'm not trying to get. View from this, I'm really figuring out how to break it, so as you can see, we got a IE wave. EI wave, you know the EI wave method? It's going through the video, right now, probably not know it, the EI wave is a touch of. A touch of the floor going in the trend direction, and then we are, um, load up at a. We're not gonna go over it, but this is the EI way, so as you can see, one touch. Two touch, usually the two touch, we see red candles, we put the, um, Fibonacci retracement tool up there, and we had. Instead of, we usually enter at the point five, as you can see, the gold line, we enter at a point two, point three six, we therefore. But I've been testing this, it doesn't seem like it works as good, but I will keep testing it, I only tested three times. And out of them three times, they only work one out of three times, but your fuck, your. Profitability, yet your RR goes crazy. If it is, so that's why I'm trying to figure out ways to like, get a better or, or do I need a one oh one, can we hold higher than a one oh one? That's what these study sessions is for. So, I'm just looking at what could I had did today, so boom. As I can see, one touch, two touch, it has to go from a area. I say two touches, cause in real time, you can't see this, as y'all can see the first touch, this don't count as a touch to me, cause in real time, you can't see this. So I say one touch, two touch, try to enter, low key, we would have lost this one. From enter to two point three six, I tested before going live, it didn't work, so. We're gonna keep testing stuff. So boom, boom, boom. As you see, we going from sell, buy, sell, so boom, we wouldn't enter nothing here, you can still actually win, to be honest, like. If you enter here, buy, enter from here, but it's, it's so low in points, you don't really care to enter. So, the first one we can enter. We went, we don't enter. As you can see, let's try the next one, straight off. That, we don't enter, cause it never comes back up to the point five percentage. And now this one, boom, 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 we can't enter neither, cause you, as you can see. We're looking to buy only, cause look. The EA show up trend, go to the five minutes, it's showing up trend, we wanna trade with the trend. Uh, the trend is your friend. The trend is your friend. So. After this, to, after today's test, we gonna go back from the jump, we got a lot of stats on, we writing a lot of stats, and I'm going to break it down. And probably a video, probably. I don't wanna, I wanna make the video by tomorrow, by tomorrow, really kinda today, I might stay up late and just make it. I watched the video saying, just do it now, I'm gonna just probably do it now, probably watch the game after the live. Take a break, watch the game, start the video, I have to do it, so guarantee, hopefully someone's, hopefully, I can. So, as you can see. Boom, 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 it breaks out from here, you probably would have entered, boom, you entered, you instantly lost. Instantly lost this one, sometimes we gotta figure out why we even enter. One, two, oh, it's another one right here. So we enter here, we lose instantly. Lose instantly. Who's about, we lose instantly. Alright, saying then this one. We enter another one here. This is actually one I like, because it's following, it's not really breaking from downwards. So, as you can see, this was the lowest low, it breaks higher highs, low, low, high, 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 low. They probably break this, boom, boom, but as you see, the EA is strong, we not wanna try to confuse y'all, it's just a point of interest, that's what we can say. And see if we enter here. Boom, 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 but I have noticed about the strategy through studying. The best advantage you can get, cause I'm gonna be on all honesty, if on a one minute. I majority see this fifty fifty, the best advantage you can get is holding RR and using the. EI waves, that's the best advantage I got, so like, if we going from an uptrend. And you know price can come back, like you see how I took this one. It can come back to here, that's the best events you got with the strategy, so doing one oh ones is not really the best with this strategy, but. It's the high RR, sometimes you can do one oh ones, like this one, I would did it one oh one, but. A root, I'm saying, if you want to come back to price, that's a foul to one, and it actually did to the foul to one on a very trendy day. Depending, I say this is more like a trend trading junk, sometime, the market doesn't move so good in this direction, as you can see. As you can see, boom, 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 it probably, as you can see, I had trends, boom, 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 as you can see, sell, sell, sell. From previous day, cause I was testing it, now, this. Say if you want to enter from here, boom, 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 you see another one you can enter, boom, buy right there, another one you can enter, sell. It agrees up, price will come to at least back here, cause m- market doesn't like gaps. The market just doesn't like gaps, and this is on a one minute, this is gonna, maybe it's not gonna feel, cause it is on a one minute, but if it was like on a five hour, and the market is a gap. I probably would have stopped. So basically, yeah. So basically, yeah. So, boom, another objective you could get, boom, sell, 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 sell. So, this is a nice one right here. Let's see if the EA wave, as you can see, this looked like an EA wave buy. So boom, as you see, this don't count. Uh, one. Four. Five. And as you can see, we are enter a little early. Like I said, the EA wave, you can enter at two point three six. And that's a two, I put that. It's at three point three six, so enter here. Close out of here. And you could do the highest, and you can make this like right here. Just in plus, this is very good for like very trendy trends. So boom, come out to here, that's a nice order, that's a nice, nice profit, nice profit. Like today would have been extremely good day, like I never seen this one minute on this day, so some days is better than others, I can see. Gold went up a lot today, so. Therefore, that's what we got today, so now, we will go back to gold, so we can finish this video for today, although. So this is for the day of today. If we would have took any trades, so any trades you would have took today, these are the trades you can take. Any trades, so boom, we could have took this, boom, take that, boom. Would have made profit, it's a lot of ways you can make profit, like you could have made profit on right here. Make, yeah, you'd have still won. Now you probably would have lost, cause say you want to come back up to here, price back up to here, and boom. Boom. Probably would have lost that one, come a little bit down. Probably would have lost, boom. It's just ways I'm figuring out, so boom, price come back all the way back up, always right here, I could have held to here, that's another one, I'm telling you. I'm telling you, I'm telling you, I'm telling you, so, that's the goal for today. That's another one you could avoid, it's a lot of, it's a lot of areas, lot of areas, lot of areas, so now. We gonna come back to here, but you gonna finish this, this is what we did. This is the thing, we gonna cover this up. And go back to only this day. And four fourteen ain't a good day, and that's I'm, and that's where I'm testing this at. Say if I tested it here, or. This is would have been a bad day, cause it's in an uptrend, maybe it's they followed the trend, but here, 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 so basically. What are we testing it at, um, I said the fourteen? So we're testing a fourteen, so basically, we are replay the whole fourteen day. So we can retest the whole fourteen, uh, so, look at. This is the replay. So, so we gonna delete all these. Gonna take a minute, I wish it had like something you could just like, scan over, like, you could just like, put like this box, and just be like, can you delete all these? Trader view, she paying for that? I need a computer, this laptop is going crazy online, it be going crazy. So we gonna keep this. We're gonna keep these notes, right here. We can delete this. Cause it's not really telling us. So these are tips. This tip one. Oh, see. See, and tip two. The game is on, but we rather study, we care about ourselves more, the next game is on, but we care about ourselves more. So, you delete all this stuff. So we, we just, it takes a minute, I swear, cause I could, they got a button where you could just delete everything, but I don't wanna delete everything, I need these notes. I need the notes, I need the notes, such it, so. I think that's everything. Hopefully that's everything, so, it's everything for this day, this the last thing. Oh my gosh, so. Whoops, so this is our looks, this is our notes, we took, uh, let's go to thirty minutes, so we probably won't zoom out, as much, so, this is, uh. This is what, how we going through, so this is step one, step two, step three, so. So I put right. One. Uh, I feel right, this is the first one, one. I don't even think this is one. So two. Two. And now, three, so today's, this is random, so we gonna write one. One. This is two. Oh my gosh, that's the two right here, we're into two, and now, this is the stats for number one, number two, and number three. So stats for number one, number two, and number three, I recorded it from previous days, but I might just re-record everything. I might re-record everything. We record everything, so. Now, let's turn on the fan and get to work, so, we going five minutes. Execute, execute, we see what price is giving us, it's giving us really, I don't really like that. Alright, let's go. Alright, so now, we gonna calculate. It's kinda hot in here, girl, girl gonna stay in here with me. It's a little hot in here, it's a little hot, I'm gonna, it's a little hot, got the fan running. So as you can see. Overall, it's an uptrend. You can say that, so we'll look at it, or it was an uptrend, we look at previous days. Yeah, you can see this is holding. The line of interest, we just say line of interest, so, line of interest, so this is, we're just. So, line of interest, we don't, I don't really care to expand, one thing I have realized, expanding fucking. Doing trading for a long time is, if you traded on fucking one minute, five minutes, I'm not looking at no thirty hour, four, I'm not looking at that shit, it doesn't make difference, it doesn't. Over analyzing, I, I really believe in that, over analyzing, so if I just look at five minute, as you can see, it's an uptrend on the five minutes, really kinda of ranging. So, points of interest to me would be right here. Like as in, hey, I might buy here to come up here, or I might sell here to come up here, mainly buy, I don't really care about, yeah, so. For the one minute, as I can see, market. So, you gotta skip a little bit few, let's just say we woke up at seven, since we started the challenge at seven. So, boom, seven, boom, as you can see, seven o'clock. So seven, as you can see, it's seven, so. What we seeing here, I believe it's an uptrend, so I believe it's gonna come, price wants to come to here, just observing. So, before we go through anything, let's see, let me tell y'all my stats for, um, step, so step one randomly test. Every area you can put a fifty percent fib on, it just enters, so basically, I went. So the random one, I went thirteen for thirteen, that's all in one day, everything I did, thirteen for thirteen. And I gained a hundred and sixty-three percent, so I gained two thousand five hundred and fifty-two on wins, and a thousand five hundred and sixty on losses, and. So, total. I should have put this to the total, this, probably like a thousand dollars. So about a thousand dollars. What better want? What, what, what the fuck am I saying? Want. A better win rate, sixty-five percent, and a gain of two hundred percent, and we didn't get the sixty-five percent, but we did get the. Two hundred, we think, uh, we got a little bit of better than two hundred, so, this one we got a four to five, with just, um. Taking smarter setups, four, five, a sixty-two percent instead of fifty percent, it's five to four, really still kinda the same thing, fifteen fifty. Four, four, five, five, kind of the same. Uh, so we lost four times, four hundred and eighty, won three times, well, I meant one, five times, uh, we're good, RR is one, one. And yeah, a thousand thing, so we the game. Uh, this one is a little bit better, cause you don't wanna take random setups, as you can see, we gained two hundred and seventy-seven percent. While taking smarter setups, cause we could just wait another day, take more setups instead of gaining, uh, a percentage of two hundred. I mean, uh, kind of a hundred and three, gained almost double that percentage, we made less money, but it is a safer route, basically. So it's more safer to take smarter setups, and now, we're gonna analyze, I kinda glad I waited, at first, I was like, why didn't I do this all in a day? I don't remember, so we gonna have to take this trade, like it's real time, but like it is, it ain't real time, so that's why we're. Testing this in the study stage, and therefore. It will execute. It will execute, boom, 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 alright, let's go, so. Oh, alright, let's zoom out, what the hell? Thank you. Uh, one minute. Minute, so boom, what we can see here, we can, somewhere, uh, even higher, so. Boom, 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 boom. Probably could have entered here for something right here, even right here. But. Not wanna act greedy. So now, as you can see, I kinda wanna zoom in, let's see, now we can't zoom in, I don't really like, I don't wanna enter from here, I really don't. But. Yeah, we're not gonna enter from there yet. If it, if it push down one more time, and then come up. I like how this look, I honestly do, if it goes up. I say we answer from here now, let's see if it's enough points actually, though, so we enter from here. We got a. Actually, one point, I actually dig it, one point is good enough. Cause they are probably entry at a point three. Uh, what the, oh yeah, I gotta bring up this. Uh, three. Three. Three, play. Stats. Number three. Three, no, three, replace stats. As I can see. Over here, replace stats, boom, boom. We got the W. W, boom. Boom, 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 L. With a one point two. We do a one point two, I should say one point four, I'm trying to be generous, but, okay. So, the one point. So replay, so where, where I take this, honestly, in all honesty, let me see. In all honesty, if I look to her. Uh. I can say. Somewhere right here, just to be on the safe side. So that's, that's a nice here, that's a nice, pretty penny. Boom. 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 So this is telling me boom, it didn't hit stop loss yet. Boom. 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 And now it hit stop loss, so boom, it hit stop, I like how this one looks, again, to be honest. I really wouldn't enter again, but this looks nice, I like how this one looks, so. And this is a, this is kinda. This is kinda it, this is kinda EIP, so one. Uh, so one touch. Boom. Boom, boom, so. Oh my gosh, we're, so, we could write one on, we lost one. So boom, we lost one. So we could come back to this green line, uh, this is a, another take profit for me. And we could close here, if we lose this, we just lose, it's a nice little, little profit. So boom, I see we are enter off that two point three six, why? Because it's an EI wave. He wants to be greedy, he wants to be greedy. We wants to be greedy. Still didn't hit stop loss, didn't hit stop loss, now, what have we learned from this, uh, even though it was a six point one, we're gonna stay with the loss. So boom, loss. So now. I don't really, boom. Boom. Now it's coming down, as you can see, go back to five minute. This is an area, I just don't believe it wants to come down, so. Let's see. Now it wants to come back up, so we, as you can see, it wants to come back up. So. At least get price to come up. I see, price wants to come up. Price shows it, okay, delete that. So what is this showing, could have entered here, but you want something a little bit above, let's see. Boom, it breaks again. So now, what is the five minute showing me, five minutes showing. And five minute is showing it broke out of something in the downtrend. Like this was just ranging all day. And now, we lost twice. We probably wouldn't wanna trade more than twice, we probably just want the uptrend, so like, say we enter here. It was thought it was a buy, we went, we lost, we probably would have seven, probably waited another hour. So now, boom. so now well so say this is it let's see this is one can't say answer from here and bring it back up to here and at least try to see if we get profit back never really hit stop loss hit stop loss so that's a three so we lost three times so we lose three times lose three times in one day so boom now this one actually comes back the one we don't take actually is crazy cuz it actually comes back that's why I said I like how that looks cuz it did break out so what you will want I still believe price wants to come back up if you go on five minute if you go on five minute it's five minute fifteen it's still in a upwards train I'm not really taking the EA too serious on a one minute so even if you do take the EA serious it's not really good there's nowhere good honestly to buy I meant sell so like say like who was the best sell this is probably the best one you record there's no really good one like you can catch this I probably want so boom 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 I probably would have pushed that to here so that'd have been a cool cell would have been a cool cell right here but if wanna follow trend and follow trend so boom still didn't hit that fifty never hit the fifty so never enter so boom you know push we won't push we won't push we won't push we won't push boom we got push so this is even a nice one right here one two three here here so if it comes down to here I like this how this looks so somewhere around here boom boom damn do you wanna enter off that you can answer I'm not gonna lie I probably would have entered off this close this out at the right here in all honesty you can go right here at least right here I think that's gonna wipe out all them losses but it can still drop so all honesty let's see what it does well let's see let's see what it does in all honesty I probably would in all honesty me being me you can take right here you can take right here but we're trying to be real we're trying to like get the best for our buck so sometimes emotion does kinda kick in cuz even this is hurting me it's hurting me because I'm like hey I lost three times and that's how I'm telling you emotions do come intact we can say hey realistically and prices in an uptrend it really has to come back up to here but I'm saying oh we got this three point five we had better e- even what if it come back down but I'm saying hey it gotta come out to here so we just gonna take this and see what it does and now I probably wouldn't exit I probably see if I can enter another one somewhere soon but as you can see look one two push up push down enter so we would wanna see something like that push up in all honesty boom stop stop we won in all honesty we won if I was seeing this I would enter in all honesty so we won a five point five point eight seven a seven so we won that one we really so let's go to five minute you can see five minute is kinda showing a downtrend now it's showing it's showing the downtrend low key I probably await I probably await so we gonna let's see let's speed this up so boom can we not say five point eight cuz if it came back up to here did this did that so was this would be five point six six seven boom boom never came back up as you can see one two this isn't an area it just keep touching I don't let's see so as you can see maybe you do wanna enter from here you think this is probably I me 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 I'm thinking this is an easy W so I probably would have entered maybe let me see how much I will lose let's see I'm gonna lose not even enough to be honest I don't really like that so it's around three o'clock I said this is more of a ranging market so boom I like how this now I like this I like it but this is a start so boom one two one two go so I can get something like this so if it wants to push up don't let it come back down and push back up to me so it actually did I would actually took something in this round so boom take something in this round should have answered to enter it's holding on off that EMA I would love this I would have loved this one like I said I answer off that two point three if you wanted to play it safe you can enter off nine see start loss that's that's a nice one right there so boom so we lose that one but I really like this one even more so sometimes you gotta be realistic sometimes if you don't wanna play the patient game even you even learn through the test and say hey we didn't play that patient game it hit here boom really didn't hit here it's hit here right here so say if it did boom 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 oh doing buying so it hit here right here came up even so right here we would have caught that one boom that would have been a cra- yeah this would have been crazy and now we probably take this last one if it does come up I don't really like that two I don't like the two point three right here I really don't but we're gonna follow the strategy since we did say that and we want where this is the test phase so and say something like right here that's probably like a fucking seven it's probably like a seven or four point three so boom that's just say we entered right here boom to me I'm scared of this RR but it's like on this strategy you gotta have a high RR because that one on one ain't gonna work it's not gonna work it's not going to work and we're following the the steps like I said this is why I'm scared of the jump we won't keep pushing up boom and push up to here these is other ones you can't enter if you believe if you truly believe you can enter again like right here like boom there's another one you can enter if you truly believe it this is what I will do I will test this I wanna test this one in one of these I will write a note test this theory of reentering so hold up I really wanna write that down test the theory of reentering test the theory of where is this uh so test where's the note where's the note at where's the note where's the note where's the note fucking that bitch on the hope what's that gonna do oh no no hold on test the I don't know how to spell theory that's why we got technology theory I didn't know how to spell theory what the fuck theory of re-entering while in a winning trade moving R R moving RR move RR or not or not nah I wouldn't I just moved up moving RR to new SL to new SL just cuz cuz like this is why I say moving RR next SL if we truly believe it's gonna come here it can't close this still win and go that that's nasty work that's real nasty work but as I said a little bit entered here say we entered here we gonna use the same take profit and close the stop loss right here that is that have been a nice two to one so we'd have got a four point seven four point what is it four point five four point five seven I oh my god I with a two point six two point seven one I so that's three out of three out of four for the day and this is a ranging market so I like I said we tested it today and it did miracles miracles girl what you doing what you doing miracles 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 I like this one this is like the real one I really like cuz look this is profit we're losing this is three points and this is you see that's a real this is a real kicker right here this is that real one out of anything even though if I would have got a higher RR here this is that kicker man right now yeah let me see I ain't gonna lie uh let's see so what time is it it's around oh five you want to answer low key I probably be done I probably me I probably be done but let's just say for the heck of it I like how this is looking I actually do boom one like I said one touch two touch say if you wanna push back up don't let this push back up so yeah as it right now it's not looking good it kinda is though to be honest so one as you can see one one two three hit boom that's a nice one we could have entered let's zoom this in let's zoom this in we enter let's just enter off the one we gonna say we answer off the one we gonna be kinda realistic here we're answer off the one we're not gonna we not even gonna be greedy we just gonna take a nice one around well we take a nice one on one guaranteed could at least had this we could at least add a three but we took a nice one on one nice one on one so Okay. As you can see, we entered a nice one on one. A nice one on one. So boom, boom, boom. This kinda looks promising. This will promising, we answer a nice, another one, one. See what this give us, let's see if we can end off five and four, what time is it? It's about, damn, the day is almost over. It's about eight o'clock, let's see if we can cast something, we probably wouldn't, you know what, let's not even take it. And let's just see what it does, we're, we just gonna end off four to four with this one, and let's see what it does. And boom, that's why I said, be a little patient with this one, maybe you gotta go deeper into the, into this, so boom, one, boom, two. That's really a touch, and then, you know. Deeper into it, so what I'm noticing, for this one, it's, there only one day though, it's only one day. Is that, when it goes deeper in and it push back up, it works, like this one, I tried to take it, it failed, but I took this one, it comes up. I take this one, it failed, so, this is a note I can take. Deeper. We could just say deeper retracements. And then, let's see, where is that arrow at, can I get an arrow? Oh my gosh. Deeper. Deeper. Retrasements. Deeper retracements equals. A better opportunity? Doesn't equal it. Opportunity. So, this is a better. So. So, this is a good right here, we probably end it right here. I don't know how long I took, I think, so this is a four to four, I like this. So, we just gonna finish this off, so boom, let's finish this off, let's see where it goes. So, go back to one, and let's see where it goes. We probably wanna be up, it's about eight o'clock, let's say, it is a, boom, boom. What time do we actually like in this area? In all honesty, I like, we gotta see a good time to react, like I said, we have all week to test this, but. I will be making a video about this. And I'll probably be making another video on Friday about this, and I'll probably be making another video, cause I've been worrying trading in our zone. So, like I said, beginning time, I noticed this about trading, I be losing like early in the morning, but when it comes to like nine. I like this, like this, I like this, I like this, so, boom, 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 one, like I said, one, two, never hit. Boom, one, never hit, never hit, never hit. So one, so raise, huh, raise, one, raise, never hit, never hit. So, this is it, this is the stats we get. Let's make. Where is the slide, minute? So we gonna put this over here, oh my gosh, where's the other one? Where's the other one? So boom. One. We gonna hold a five minute, we gonna go to five minute. So this is, this is how it looks, so this is one step, two step, random, this is it, so. This is all the same. Seven, this is all the same, so I'm just doing the stats, so now, we gonna get our stats. So, the win slash loss ratio, we're going. Four slash four, fifty percent. The thing, and the thing about this, I think I can get a better percentage, to be honest. Think I could really get a better percentage, I'm not kidding. If I just keep playing with this, I really believe I can get a better strategy, I'm not kidding. So. Profit gain. Ah, so this is a fifty percent. Profit, let's see. Oh shit, I can't spell, profit, gain, it's not hard, can't really spell, gain equals, so. We gonna add this soup. So, I put a calculator. So, okay, ah, this nigga, yeah, okay. So can, I'm gonna click back up here. Can I go way to? Five point six seven plus four point five seven. Plus two point seven one. Plus one equal thirteen, so. And this is for forty. Four eighty. What is the chat G B Z, I forgot how to get there. Okay, okay, so, thank you chat G B Z. So, a thousand two nine five divided by four eighty. Times one hundred, so it's a profit gain of two ninety. So, two ninety percent, so, that's everything I got for today. Boom, we good, so basically, I will still be studying, I'm gonna take a break. I'm gonna come back, I'm not going live, I'm gonna actually drop a video on this, all this, I got all these information, probably clean this up, but I'm gonna keep, I'm gonna do three. Uh, I, 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 this shit looks sloppy, so, this is what I will do, I don't like how this look. So, keep this right here, keep all of this right there. We gonna keep all of this. So we do some more, we just cleaning this up for the video. Oh my god, god damn it. So. I'll delete this. He's gonna delete a bunch of stuff. I'm gonna delete these. Cause this notes doesn't mean anything else now, I'm trying to see very much bullish, we gotta. So I was testing this all along, for about ten hours on, the theories I came up with, and now. Things weren't trying to work, but we, this thing, and then, oh. So, well, this is it, and basically go over live with me, and yeah, peace, I'll be doing a video tonight.